All right, so I'm gonna call us on to order. And so on our agenda, well, I guess we'll do that first. Need to approve the minutes from the world's longest meeting. It's an official record, the last one, BCTV record. I'm going on record that I asked everyone if you wanted to change things around. You all said no. Can we approve those minutes? There's a lot of them, so you might have some comments.
Oh, I do have comments.
Yeah, I want to have a motion. Do we want to do just the minutes or do you want to break apart the warrants and all that if you have one?
I think we can put it all together.
Okay.
I move the agenda, the warrants, and the minutes.
Second.
All right, so then you had some things that you were...
Yeah, and the unfinished business on page two. We're talking about pre-K programs and Frank said that this is because school systems will now pay for students to attend pre-K. And actually, it's the state that's paying for students to attend pre-K.
And what does it say now?
It says "school systems." And the project at Academy School, the current modular structure being removed. We also talked about alternatives, and that wasn't included in the minutes. I'd like to have that in there, too.
You got both of those?
Can you repeat the first one, please?
The sec-- the...
Do you want to just pass that over to Kelsey?
There's no way to get it there.
Okay, very good.
It's the, in part two unfinished business, Frank talked about how there have been significant increases in the number of students in pre-K programs. And it says, "This is because the school systems will now pay for the students." That's actually the state, not the school systems. We don't pay for them.
For pre-K? We pay a lot of money for pre-K?
Yeah, yeah, true. But it's coming through the state.
It comes through the local budget. It's one of your line items in the local...
But doesn't that come from the state based on usage?
No.
Okay. So there are two... So there are two sources that pay for pre-K.
Yeah, if you're talking about the pre-K that we budget for, we're gonna go through the budget again, so I can point that out under the budget discussion if you like. But that is the primary source for the pre-K provider for, as part of Act 166, that it's an appropriation through the local school budgets.
So the 10 hours of funding that comes from the state for people who want to take and manage a preschool is different money?
The 10 hours a week is a obligation of the local school districts to pay for any parent that enrolls their child into a qualified pre-K program.
So it's an unfunded mandate that we have to pick up?
Well, the count, the student count now includes pre-K.
Right, so we...
It includes all of those schools or just the Oak Grove kids?
All private providers that Bradlboro Town residents access.
I mean, the adjusted student number includes those pupils as well?
Yes, as long as it's a qualified program.
Okay.
But they're not a full student, they're like a portions.
Right.
Point four six.
And that comes, that came without money. Came as an obligation of the district without money.
Well, yes and no, because we get the money through the equalized student count.
Yes, so, right, that's the answer, yeah.
So I still understand the 10 hours that the state said everybody can have, the state will pay for. Did the state provide the money for that?
Essentially, it's through what Jill just said. It's through, the local districts get to count those .46 FTEs in your equalized student count. We're gonna go over that page again, that tax calculation page. The tax revenue is what pays for it, so, yeah, it depends on how you want to characterize school funding. Ultimately, we all pay into the education fund, and that education fund does pay for about 80% of all, you know, salaries and benefits and fuel oil and everything else that we use. Pre-K is just part of that expenditure, so, you know, another way to say it is, you know, the local property tax, school property tax, all goes to the education fund, and then it all comes, it comes back as school budgets are proposed and passed based on the ability of the local district grand list to raise the funds.
Right. When the state said, well, you know, this can go on forever, I don't want to do that, but when the state said, for instance, we have to have anti-bullying training for teachers, they didn't, they didn't then give us an assessment, additional students to pay for that. It was, money came to pay for that. Money didn't come to pay for that.
That's...
We had to pay for that.
Yeah, with the...
In this case, there is money through the formula which counts these kids as .46.
It's just no different than the money that comes to us to pay for our teacher salary or...
Except it's meant for pre-K, which makes it different.
It's, there is no, there is no check in the mail from the state. We incur the expense, it's part of the total, what's called education spending, and that whole program is funded through the formula.
So what's the change you want to make in the minutes then?
Well, this indicates that we have to raise more money to pay for the pre-K, because it says the school systems are paying for the students. And the state offsets that with the assessment, so I don't know how to say it, but it's not just coming out of, this indicates that we're having to pay for all of these things with additional assessment on the tax rate, and we're not. So that's what I'd like it to say, but I'm not sure how to stay on there.
Maybe you could say, add the phrase "as funded by the adjec--," I'm sorry, "equalized people," equalized student.
Or you could not make any adjustments in last time's minutes and just leave this discussion. Andy?
So the minutes reflect what Frank said, right? So when you amend the minutes, you're amending, you're amending them because something was incorrectly stated. But these are stated correctly. Your viewpoint, however, is different from Frank's. You, you want, you want that to be reflected, the fact that you perceive this differently than Frank. But the minutes, the minutes are accurate, and that will be reflected.
I'm leaning towards...
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, what Jill said, that we just leave this discussion in the minutes of this meeting and leave what Frank said as, as it was.
So what was your second one?
That we discussed alternatives to building a new structure when we discussed the addition of the academy.
Alternative building structure?
Alternatives to a $680,000...
The way you phrase it, it makes it sound like we discussed not building the building, but I think we did discuss that, too.
Yeah, David gave a...
A modular dis...
An example, yes.
Okay, so any further discussion on the minutes? Any discussion on any other part of the warrants or the agenda? Are we set to vote on the approval of the minutes, the warrants, and the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have some visitors here. We normally recognize you folks right at the very beginning. So we could do that, and then we're gonna jump, if you don't mind, we're gonna jump into the budget so that Frank can give us that and then not be at this meeting for forever since he has other needs. And then we'll jump back into the discussions that you guys probably paid for. But would you like to introduce yourselves now?
Hi, I'm Margaret Atkinson from the Winston Brown.
I'm Janice Stockman, the further childhood coordinator for Winston Brown.
I'm Melissa Rose Gaskell.
I'm Samantha Kepel. I am a licensed teacher in our pre-K partnership at Hilltop Monastery School.
I'm Tamara Mount, and I'm head of school at Hilltop Monastery School.
Sure.
Franz Reichman from the Bradlboro Representative Town Meeting Finance Committee.
All right, so then, folks, if there's no problems, I'd like to jump in the agenda and let Frank go first and look at the budget. We asked at the end of our last meeting that the administrators go back and see how we might get to a very low or 0% increase. And so this is the result. And then, we do need to vote on this relatively soon. It does not have to be tonight. I think it has to be next week if we don't do it tonight, in order to get it to the town. Pardon, two weeks, the next meeting, two weeks. Seventeen. Seventeen. So see how we feel, whether we want to do that. All right, hi. Turn it to you.
Okay, so the board had asked us to come in with a 0% change on the equalized tax rate, and we have a proposal for you that does that. So the first page of the document that I've just handed out really only has two changes from the prior version that we looked at on the 20th. So the main change that you might notice if you had the prior draft in front of you is use of fund balance. So we have increased that a little bit. It was $269,500, and we've got it to $330,000. We had a discussion about, about a percentage of the operating budget to be retained in fund balance. So I added a couple of notes down at the bottom of that very first page, which, it just takes this revised number of $14,659 on the spending plan, and it shows what proportion of the fund balance is still being proposed to be retained. So down at the bottom, you see estimated reserves if this proposal was accepted and the funding formula that we understand from the AOE stays in place. You see, we would, we are projecting $644,000 in fund balance for the general fund, and this would be through the end of this budget period fiscal year '19, so that would be through June of 2019. And then, at this point, we haven't proposed use of the $377,000 in the capital fund. When you add those two up, it's $1 million, $1,022. And $1,022 is 7% of $14,659. We had talked about a target of at least 5%, so you see, I've just done a calculation there for you, so 5% of $14,659 is $732,000, and that is $289,000 more. You know, our, what we're proposing is $289,000 more than, than a minimum amount. The other, the other thing that, when we talk about fund balance, I, I've used as a rule of thumb is that I don't recommend that a board use more than an amount that they could sustain for at least three years, because that gives you three years to adjust your program to work within the resources you have. If we, if we used, you know, say, $600,000 or $700,000 in one year, the following year, you wouldn't be able to match that, because you would exhaust your resources, and you would, you would essentially create a spike in the tax rate, which is something we try to avoid. So this is a recommendation that we could sustain if needed for multiple years. The, the only other change, and I probably would have Andy speak to it, is a deferment of the capital project at Academy. So that's reflected in the $14,659. That number is approximately $400,000 lower than your earlier draft. So we'll talk a little bit more about that rationale. But before I ask maybe Andy to share his opinion on that, if you would look at the second page, the tax page, just to sort of point out what you had asked us to provide, how you, where you see that, and it is on line 29, is the equalized tax rate that's associated with the Bradlboro Town School District. You see, the percent change, dollar change is zeroed out there. The far column to the right, fiscal year '19, $1,662, and the present year, 2018, is the $1,662 as well. That's what you had asked us to accomplish, and we did that in two ways. One is cut $400,000 out of the budget and increase the use of fund balance to the $330,000 level. So, Andy, if you wouldn't mind just maybe reflecting on it, on the rationale of essentially deferring that, that improvement into the near future.
So the thinking is to defer that project so that we can engage in more conversation about space needs for Bradlboro Town School District, because they go, they go well beyond simply creating space for a pre-K classroom. There's a lot of, a lot of conversation and dialogue needs to occur, I think, in order to really have a comprehensive plan for going forward for the next 10 or 20 years in terms of space. And, you know, we haven't done that. So I think that, that it's prudent to wait, to have those conversations, engage in the needs assessment for space, and defer to, defer out one more year.
Do you think the building itself is sustainable for another year?
Yeah, it is. I mean, we, it was interesting, because after the last meeting, we had to do some repairs on it. But, you know, four years ago, we put a new roof on it, so we had pipes freeze up there last night. But we'll continue to do those kinds of things, but they're, they're small, cost-wise, in comparison to building a building, and they're particularly small if you think about building a building, and then five years from now, folks sit around this table and say, "Oh, gee, I wish we had thought of that before we built that building."
Anybody have comments from the board?
Sounds like a good idea. Rather than, you know, rather than trying to in the next two weeks, a thorough examination of alternatives, let's just put it on.
Yeah, and, and based on your recommendation, Andy, I mean, obviously, you're going to, if it needs to be, if it needed to be addressed, you would address it. You know, we have full faith in that, so if you feel we can get another year, then I do think it's good to try to look, make sure we cover all of our bases.
If you're looking through your budget and you were wondering where you find that, so page 26 in the detailed document, there's three sets of documents. There's a couple of spreadsheets on the first two pages, and then there's a 26-page budget document, so I guess it's, actually, it's 28 pages, but it's on page 26. Your, your earlier version, in the middle of the page, there's an account number, $2,604.50, so it's construction services, and the rest of that is saying planned capital. The $290,000, that was $690,000, so that's where the $400,000 was reduced. And then just continuing to go through this document, the very last five pages are the capital plan. And if you look at the third page of the, of the set of five pages on the very back of this document, just one note there, on page three of five, the capital plan, this again is where we made the change. In the middle of the document, you see renovation modular replacement, so fiscal year '19, again, we've taken out $400,000. But we have left $240,050, so a total of $290,000 for, for those, not only the feasibility study, but, you know, Andy's mentioned and been quite concerned, and you see, we've had a commitment to addressing those, those glass block walls that are thermally very inefficient. So the thinking is that we would do a substantial improvement on that. We'll get information for you on that. But then, looking out further, 2021, 2022, you know, we've extended the capital plan for this future project. And maybe just while we're looking at budget numbers, because it came up a little bit earlier on, on the, on the pre-K, just a, just a sort of reminder, where is that? It's back here in the general neighborhood of page 28 of the big budget document, the detailed budget document. So page 28 is, you know, it's the local appropriation. There's no, you know, no difference of what's on page 28 than in any other page on the, on the 28, 28 pages is the pre-K. So the pre-K is, as we say, it's part of the local budget that is interpreted into page two that we started with, the tax rate. So I could revisit that real quickly, but, so we have a local budget equipment, a commitment of $634,000 in this budget to pre-K, which is where you see salary and benefits, that's, that's the program here at Oak Grove that's just started. And then, there's the $121,000 to early ed services, the Head Start program, and $408,000 is, David, that's what we were talking about earlier. That's, that's the local appropriation for those provisions that Act 166 gave to all residents in the state of Vermont for parents who want to access pre-K for their four-year-olds.
Can I just ask a question about that, because this doesn't make sense to me exactly. How it is that the same funding amount we're receiving from the state for kids that is supposed to pay for 10 hours a week of instruction at a contracted school, yet the, when they come here to Oak Grove, it's the full week of school, isn't it? Which is much more than 10 hours. I think it's, you know, whatever, 30 hours, something like that? So how are, why are those both counted as half a student? When the, the kids here are getting as much time, space, and teachers as a regular people, and the rest of the kids are getting less than half?
Yeah, let's look at page two, and I'll try to address that question. When I say page two, it's the second page of the, in the handout. The first page is the budget summary. The second page is that tax, that tax estimate. So you're, you're asking a question that requires, you know, some, some explanation of the school funding formula, and there's a, there's a lot of components to it. The question you're asking is, well, before I...
My question is, A, is that really the case? And if so, how can that be, that seems to not make sense. Why is it like that?
So my quick answer to that is, yes, it's the case, and two, it's the law.
I don't know if you can answer the why, but the first part, I'm sure you can definitely answer.
It's the way the law sets up.
Yeah. You're, you're raising the question, is it equitable? Is it, you know, is it, what's the rationale? And, yeah, I, I can't make a, you know, value judgment on that, but I can explain the way it works. And I, and we can do it relatively quickly. So I do think it would be helpful if, if you had a sense of how the answer to your question fits into the state law, and then, you know, it's your decision if you think it's fair or not.
Okay.
But, but you see, the $14,659 is, is the proposal that, that the administrative group has come back to you tonight, and that's what we just discussed on the first page. And then, when you look at the very end of the page 28, I don't, I didn't reiterate that, but you would see all of those spending proposals add up to that number. So this is how, this is how the funding mechanism works for all public schools in the state. It's the board's proposed budget that ultimately has to be approved by the electorate, so that's our work to come in March. And then, it's, it's less revenues that we are not asking the state for, from, directly from the education fund. So that's $1,330,000. That's on that line 10. Of that $1,330,000, $330,000 is our own cash in the bank. It's our, it's us spending our own prior year reserves. So then, what's the other million? Well, when we go to page one, there's just a few revenue lines in Bradlboro Town's budget. The single largest one is on page one of the, of the very, the document, not the, not the detail, this one. On page one, there's not too many revenue sources. It's just, the biggest number on the page is the general state aid. But there's $1 million in there of other revenue. The, the single largest is the sub-grant from the Supervisory Union. It's a federal sub-grant. So that's the title one that you've heard a lot about in terms of its impact, the education support, teacher, academic support teacher. But those numbers add up to a million. So we're almost done with the funding formula. It's, it's the board's approved budget minus revenue that comes from somewhere else. In this case, the biggest share is the federal government. And now, we have net education spending, which is the difference between the two numbers, $13,329. That's on line 14. So, so I just want to kind of, you know, reiterate, that is funding pre-K, that's funding the principal, that's funding the capital improvements, that's funding everything in this 28-page document, all those line items. And I can see, you know, how David's questioned, it's, it's not a black and white issue, you know, who's paying for that? Well, here it is. This is who's paying for it. It's, it's $13 million divided by our equalized students of 814 is a, is a statistic, $16,356 per student. The state says, here's how we're gonna pay for public education in Vermont. We're gonna take your spending, you're gonna divide it by a number they come up with every year that says, "We can fully fund about $1.6 billion in public ed spending in Vermont." They come up with a number. That number this year is $9,842. It's that first number on the top of the page. And they say, "You're gonna divide your $16,000 by that number, and that's your tax rate." And, and then, that tax rate doesn't go through the school board, it goes to the select board of every town. The select board goes to their grand list, and they say, buck 62 times the grand list, raises, in our case, only about $8 million. We're, we're proposing a budget of $14 million. So, but in Bradlboro, we'll send $8 million as residents to the Montpelier through the town office, and then, Montpelier will, will send us the difference that we can't raise to, to pay for our education. So that's, that's the way the funding works. And then, when you get into, well, if we get to count .46 for our kids in pre-K, whether they go to a 10-hour program or a 30-hour program, you know, why is that fair? Well, that's all translated in that number on line 23, 814.93 kids. That number represents a one FTE, a full-time equivalent, for your, your, your child who's in a K through six program in any of our preschools between the days of October 1st and November 1st. Plus, the number of kids that we have who are in poverty, the state adds a .25 FTE. So there, that's part of the value issue that you're raising, you know, is that right? Is that fair? But our number is increased by .25 for every student that the state identifies as in poverty through, you know, the Medicaid eligibility, the SNAP program, all of the programs that families access. And then, they add the .46 for the pre-K kids. Doesn't matter if the pre-K are who we pay for or, or who we educate in our own and employ. You know, you remember, we looked at 300, $684,000 in pre-K, well, part of that, about $80,000 is people we pay and the cost. The state doesn't distinguish that. And then, they add all those numbers up, and they divide by a factor so that in the end of the day, the whole state doesn't come out with more kids than we really have. That's the equalization formula. The idea is that they give us more kids than we actually have if we are poorer, and we have more kids speaking a second language, because that's also one of those factors. And that lowers our tax rate if, if we just take the money and run, essentially, or, you know, that, we would have more kids divided by our 16, you know, our, our budget of $14 million. That lowers our tax rate. That lowers our tax rate. Well, Brattleboro's done a remarkable job over many years of not being the lowest tax rate in the state and saying, hey, thanks for the credit, you know. But Brattleboro has reinvested in those interventions that you've heard over the last, you know, three years that I've been here that are very effective. And those interventions are funded through that equalization formula. So, is .46 fair? Is .25 fair? Is the whole thing divided by .87 fair? The Secretary of Education is supposed to give a report to the legislature once every two years that says, yeah, we got this right. That's-
We didn't mention the subtraction of, with Act 46. It takes away the phantom student, which also comes into play, but not so much for us as it did like at the high school level.
Right, right.
Which is another question when I first heard of it, you know, is that fair? The whole idea of, okay, so when you lose a lot of kids, it dramatically affects how much money you would be getting, but not necessarily the programs that you have to provide. So, the state tried to come up with some way of doing it, but then you're paying for phantom students for how many years?
And that was a mechanism to protect small schools. When 150-student body went down 10%, it's only 15 kids. But 10%, when you get into a calculation of cost per student, is, this means you, you know, if you want to keep a stable tax rate, you're going to cut your budget 10%. That's very difficult to do. And then, the next year, you might get 12 kids come back in, and are you going to rehire? You know, that's very difficult to do. So, that's the context of your question, and that's, that's the way it works.
Okay. I mean, I'm just, the reason why I asked about it was because as we're looking into providing more of these, you know, onsite, provided by the school district, pre-Ks, I'm just wondering how is that going to affect our actual spending when we're basically, you know, we're already getting that amount of money for these kids, whether they come here or not? So, as we provide them a lot more hours of instruction, the state's not going to give any more money than they are giving for that child right now, even though they're just paying for them to go to 10 hours a week at Westby Nursery School or wherever?
Yeah. So, it really comes down to, if you run your own pre-K program like we are at Oak Grove, is the cost per student to run that program less than the average cost to run our K-6 programs? And if the answer is yes, then this calculation is going to, it's going to be a favorable effect on the system if the average cost is less than not doing it. So, we can do those calculations, that's pretty straightforward. But this is where, this is where the, you know, I think the discussion David was raising, which is, it's, I understand it because I deal with this all the time, but if you don't deal with this all the time, I can see how difficult it is to understand. And that is, well, if we're paying $400,000 for pre-K, you know, for the private provider, isn't that, isn't that costing us money? And the answer is no. If you take $400,000 divided by the .46 FTEs, and you get a cost per student that's less than $16,000 a year. If the answer is yes, then hip, hip, hooray, it's lowering our tax rate. It's not costing the residents anything. And that's exactly the same principle behind the merger. It's a matter of, it's a simple cost-per-student-driven formula. So, if you lower your cost per student, you can spend a lot more money, but if it's at a lower cost per student than your current business model, then you're going to reduce the tax burden to the public.
Okay.
So, two things that occurred to me. Did somebody else want to?
I just wanted to get you back on-
You should do that.
All right, I'll do that. Just to go back to what Andy was saying, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to defer looking at an addition or a new modular, is we really need to spend more time looking at the pre-K needs, looking at how it affects private providers if we're opening additional public pre-Ks, looking at, so, what are our trends over time with the pre-K population? So, I don't, I feel like we made a good decision in deferring that, in that we really need to gather more information from pre-K providers, looking and making some projections. Janice Stockman's here tonight. I think she'll be, play a big role in looking at surveys that we have to send out to parents. Are you accessing the 10 hours? If not, is it because you need more than 10 hours and you can't afford the extra hours at a private provider? Are you happy homeschooling your pre-K child? We need to get a lot of information before we really make those decisions about public pre-K and where we go with that.
And I think it's important to mention, Frank mentioned the federal funds. And in the case of Oak Grove, we have had start financing half of the classroom and enrolling half of the classroom. So, we bring resources. We bring personnel, and we bring federal money to the table. So, if, there's an opportunity for blending funds, so it's not all on the tax.
And that's probably where it's coming in, reducing the per-student cost with all of that support.
And so, the two things I was going to get at were, I mean, that's, this is actually really very timely as well, because we've got preschool on the agenda for tonight, and folks here to talk to us about it. But it reminds me, Spoon, of a question you asked me, and we wanted to put into the town report of why we did the pre-K at Oak Grove anyway. And the discussion for us wasn't just about, well, it's nice to have pre-K. That wasn't why we did it. As a board, we did this because we had specific needs that we weren't able to meet in the existing Head Start structure that we were doing. And the idea of having a blended classroom of not just Head Start kids and being able to make that transition and that connection into our public schools was vital to us. So, it, it's an interesting discussion that we're reminding ourselves of all of those points and how they come together, and that it all falls back on the budget, which I thought was going to be five minutes, and we're 45 minutes in. So, that was my second point, is are we comfortable with this budget that we would like to vote on it? Do we have things we'd like to send back for the administrators to look at again? Or-
I have a few questions.
Okay.
But, well, the total budget is down, but I noticed that each of the school budgets is up. On page 14, the Green Street-
Are you comparing to last year or the prior?
To the previous draft. Yeah, which is the change. Yeah. On page 14, school Green Street is around 15, I just did these into the thousand. Look, you know, try to get the exact numbers. 15,000, and then on- Over the pages. On 20, Oak Grove, the total is up, 25,000. And then, Academy is down because of the reduction from the building project, but the regular instruction is up at 15,000 or so. So, I'm just wondering why those, why those went up from draft to draft, what was expanded or changed?
Were there other changes?
Well, in the Green Street budget, there's the social worker position.
But that was in the draft?
Yeah, that was. Let's see. So, you're, on page 14, let me, we have the Green Street budget down 298,000. But you're saying, when you look at the prior draft, and you're looking at the 12-
The 1220 draft? 1206.
Okay. And we know, 1220, right? Yeah. So, that's my most recent point of reference, the 1220 draft.
Has that already changed?
No change.
So, there's no change here from here to 1220?
Right, right. The earlier draft, we would have still been looking at health insurance plans. The whole enrollment process was going on right then, and that could have explained some changes, but, yeah. No changes other than the $400,000 from the 1220 draft.
Now, just informational on the three-year comparisons from the AOE. Line 38 and line 39, our responsibility is line 29, that's from our schools. Line 38 is pre-K, so that includes, K-12, that includes the high school?
Yes.
And then, what is line 39?
Yeah. So, line 39 is the CLA-adjusted tax rate.
So, 171 is adjusted to 174?
Yes, 171 is equalized, and because our CLA is 104%, it's basically saying our tax assessments are too high. So, folks will pay less than what would be equalized. Or another way to say it is theoretically, if we went out and got reappraised, everybody would see their tax assessment go down by 4%. But that's what the CLA number on line 32 means, 104, means that town office, listeners have sent real estate transactions as they are required to the state Department of Property Valuation and Review. They look at the difference between tax assessed value and actual sale, and then they say, on average, Brattleboro properties are selling for 4% less than the tax assessed value. So, the state says, hey, let's not unfairly tax folks if they're tax assessing or the real estate market has done things, you know, differently than the next town over. Guilford just went through a reappraisal, and they went from 93% to 100%, which is a dramatic impact on that bottom line. And that does nothing to do with the school board's, you know, work or control, but it is what shows up in the mailbox.
And so, the 164 is what is the actual rate that will show up on people's, well, not counting what the state's going to add, that's what'll show up on a tax report.
That would be if, if the Brattleboro Union budget goes through with an assumption on line 3580 there, $1.76. I'm meeting with the Finance Committee tomorrow morning. I'm sure there will be changes. So, that's definitely tentative. And then, the indices that we've been talking about, very top of the page at 9,842, that's a state statistic, they could change that. That, you know, that would change the whole, all the assumptions. But what we know today, that it would be $1.64 is the actual tax rate.
Frank, I've been, I've been hearing a lot about the state saying there's, there will be a 7% increase next year. What, how will that affect our budget?
Well, that's what's alluded to at the very top of the page on that same tax page. The current, what they call property yield is $10,076. I don't know if that number is anywhere on this page. I think it is.
Well, I'm looking at property dollar equivalent yield. I don't see a $10,000. I see a $9,818.
Yeah. So, if you looked at the same document in the prior year, that 9,842 was 10,000, I think, 10,076. So, that's what they are referring to. They have made that assumption right there. They've reduced, and this gets back to the whole how to calculate the tax rate, they have reduced the denominator of the tax rate formula by that amount to essentially raise at least 3% more, even if we just spend the same amount as a system. And that is their estimate of state revenues going into the Ed Fund, the collective growth or lack of growth on the grand lists for the entire state, take all the town grand lists and add them up. That's what they're doing. And then, what they project, school board budgets will be proposed at. So, that's-
Will be what?
Proposed for. They're projecting, I believe, a 3% increase on average in school spending. Of course, that's not the case for us. This proposal is less than 1%. The high school will be lower in the projected year than the prior year.
So, all this news about a 7% increase in school taxes may not even be applicable.
It may not. If we were the norm in the state, it would not be at all. But, you know, I don't, I don't know to what extent Burlington and, you know, Rutland and some of the other larger areas are-
Is there any way, part of the reason I ask that has to do with a lot of things like using reserve funds and postponing a big capital project, and consequently, wondering what the budget will look like next year and the year after. I've really appreciated that on the town side, they have finally gotten to a point now where they're doing five years at a time estimating. So, so you can see the decisions you're making this year, what impact it'll have on next year and the year after. And so, I wonder, it seems strange to me that with inflation every year, we have a budget that has gone down, and I, it just feels to me like somehow that's going to come back to bite us pretty hard. I mean, I look back at 2016, the school tax was $1.63. Now, four years later, it's $1.66. That's hardly any increase at all in four years, and I guess I just-
Did you want us to be paying more?
Huh?
You know, there are so many things. That 166 passed, and we were given a bunch of extra students, which kept it low, and then they adjusted that because they gave us too many, which moved it around a little bit more. So, it's really, you almost have to look before the previous three years to start comparing.
Like I said, look at 2017, then it went way down a lot, and then you back up a lot the next year.
There's also the whole subtraction of all this special ed in one year. So, to compare these budgets year by year by year, is it possible? It is impossible right now.
Really, it's not, it's not.
It's not a fair thing to do.
And so much of it is driven by enrollment. So, if you wanted to look out into the future and have a sense of tax rates and spending, you really need to start with, you know, refining an enrollment projection. And, you know, our enrollment projections are that we are looking at a relatively flat demographic change. So, it would suggest that we should be anticipating a relatively flat spending pattern for the-
Is that, when you say a flat demographic change?
No growth.
That means that enrollment will hold steady at about the same number?
That's the, that's the assumption. That's the assumption that we've, we've come down 20-something percent, 22, 23% over the last 15 years, but there's no indication we're going to go down another 20% because we're seeing our average class size is starting to normalize at, I think in Brattleboro Town, it's about 90, 90 students per grade level, so.
Have we ever looked for indicators about how school, school enrollment may change? Like enrollment in preschool? Or is there any, are there any signs that we can look at that we anticipate?
I can tell you that Paul Smith is in contact with the pre-K providers on a regular basis. I don't know if it's three times a year or two times a year that you're sending data to him, and keep, we're keeping track of those numbers of how many students that are in pre-K. So, those have been pretty steady, as Frank said, kind of leveled off. It seemed like it was 155 to 165, three and four-year-olds. It seemed like it was 155 to 165, three and four-year-olds. I'm certain that Deb through Head Start is keeping track of, has the history of those numbers. So yeah, we look at those trends over time.
Okay.
I'm sure if you wanted to be a little bit more predictive, past two years into the future, you could just look at the birth rates.
Well, you can though, because the, I think we can find out what's in Brattleboro, but New Hampshire won't give us that information. So we can't really find out how many kids are being born in Brattleboro. You can't get the actual.
Being born to Brattleboro parents, there could be kids.
Oh, you're saying like if they were born in Keene, but they live in Brattleboro?
Right.
Okay.
Or vice versa, somebody from Hinsdale is born in Brattleboro.
Yeah, okay. They don't track it by how many, by the resident town of the parent, it's just by how many were born at the hospital. I see.
So returning to our question, are we ready for more questions? Franz, I guess I'm gonna ask you at this point, do you have anything you wanna ask?
Frank, I do.
Okay, well, what's happened?
Well, as I've been looking over the pages, I've been trying to understand more about in the, what this, this body, what this school board is really responsible for on this funding and state formula piece of paper. And my eye keeps coming to line 31, and I haven't heard anybody talking about line 31 And it seems to me that the work that the school board has done to keep budget growth under control has really, you know, been very effective. And, you know, all the numbers that we've talked about tonight reflect that. And yet, at the bottom, we're seeing that numbers are going up in terms of the tax burden. What I've tried to do is isolate the specific factors that are driving that, and I think Frank has certainly mentioned them. There seem to me to be three things that are pushing the tax rate up despite the school budget. One is the CLA, the common level of appraisal, which by going down a little bit has pushed the tax rate up a little bit. One is that property dollar equivalent yield of 9,842, which having come down from 10,072 is pushing the tax rate up. And the other one, I wrote down on my piece of paper that I put someplace else, but I guess, well, let me, let me go on to the next thing, which is that the equalized pupils are up, which should bring the tax rate down, but it doesn't seem to be doing that. Oh, the other thing is the, the ratio of students in the town schools as compared to the high school. And that since there's been a shift in that proportion from fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 19, it actually has pushed up the amount of tax burden that's attributable to the town school district. And so that's, these are, these are all the things that I see are gonna have a big effect at town meeting, you know? Town meeting reps who I represent, respond to, are gonna say, wait a second, you're telling me the budget is down, but if I'm looking at the total projected here, tax burden for schools, it's up 2.7%. And if I zero in on the town school district, the, the increase, well, at least on line 31, is 5.8%. So I, first of all, I'm asking, do I have these things right? Is this actually what's happening? And then second of all, I'm just kinda scratching my head, what do we do about that and what, what is the response of the taxpayers gonna be to that?
I think to simplify the, the answer to the question is, is you can say that it's all attributed to the income equivalent yield. You can see that, that the board has done their share and what they can control and they've got cost per student actually down 3% and they have the tax rate flat at the elementary. But the state has started the conversation with a 3% tax increase. And the, you've mentioned all the right indicators, but in terms of having a coherent question answered around how is it our budget's down, but our taxes are going up? It's really, the state is starting the playing field off at a tax rate that is up by design 3%.
So the, the state is saying, this is the amount of money we are gonna put in to support local schools. And that isn't gonna be enough to keep the taxes for local taxpayers at the same level it was this year.
If they spent the same.
Even if they spent the same amount of money. So basically, it's a lack of state funding that is driving this up and that that would be the responsibility of state legislators and the governor and his administration. So to, to address that in any effective way, we would have to go to our state reps and say, what's going on here? And then they could come back with whatever their concerns are in terms of the state budget.
And even let us know what lines of revenue are the sources of the shortfall. You know, it's, I'm sure it's in some sort of a economic outlook, I have, I haven't seen it, but I'm, I'm sure that this is informed by, the, the tax commissioner starts this conversation and they send a letter out to all school board members, essentially outlining why they feel that the, the yield number needs to be adjusted so that it, the same, at the same spending level, it will raise this additional 3%. I'm thinking of that letter, I probably have a copy, have you seen that?
Yeah, I do, the letter from the tax commissioner?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, that's, that's, the best information we have is the rationale behind the state's actions.
Really Franz, what you're getting at is for us to adjust, it would be cutting our budget.
Even more than we already get.
We've, we've done, I think, level. At this point, for us to get to, to not having that, we would have to be severely cutting programs.
My concern is really how do we explain this to taxpayers in terms of what's actually causing what looks like a tax increase this year? So I'm trying to make sure that I understand it, but I also wanna make sure that everybody understands it.
And the irony is if you go to my peer here, they will tell you the problem is us, we spend too much. That's why everything's going up.
Well, and across the state, as Frank pointed out through the discussion earlier, everybody does this.
There are other places that are.
And we're not, I don't think we're normal. And I don't think a lot of people are sending up a budget or proposing a budget that's pretty much square on. I think the normal is some sort of an increase statistically.
One other minor point, I guess, is in the capital budget, it looks like the version that was handed out today goes out a couple more years than the previous version, and that included the change in the project for Academy School, which then had some numbers out in fiscal year '21 and '22 that seemed like the size of the project is going up by $300,000. So I just, that's, that's just something that's off in the future and we can talk about.
And that's something that we talked about administratively that, that we, we know we need to do more analysis of, but as Andy has raised the issue with the board here, Academy School's sort of been designated the center to address our depth of student needs and that is push programming into spaces that are not appropriate for, for that, that educational activity. So there, it is a larger issue and so that's what those numbers reflect, is that there's more than just the pre-K and the modular building to be, to be replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
So anybody else with any comments at this point? Would we like to make a motion and actually vote on this or would we like another week, there are two weeks to think about it?
I'm ready to vote.
I mean, we're, we're at nothing. I mean, our budget's up by 100,000, but the previous one was, there's really not much more we can do.
I move that we approve this version of the budget. A second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, so Frank, you have a budget decision to be sent on to the town.
Thank you to Frank and all the administrators.
Thanks for saying it ahead of time, so I can look at the long graph and ask questions if that'll lead.
Good questions, they're all good questions.
So the other thing, the other thing that has to be done by the end of the month is my letter, right? For the report?
Yes.
And we discussed what we wanted to put in there. I don't wanna discuss that right now, but keep that in your heads because.
We could discuss it at the next meeting.
I think so.
And then we want to approve a warning, I know Barb maps out the language and the dates, but we just wanna make sure.
So the next meeting, we can have a. Okay, so then I'd like to go to getting these folks that are back here and skip over any committee reports and administrative reports, if that's okay? So, that, I don't know what you'd like to do first, Oak Grove pre-K information discussion? What are you all here for? You wanna hear Oak Grove? Let's hear, Jerry, let's hear from Jerry.
Well, what I'll do is, I have kind of a PowerPoint, but I'll skip, I have about four slides that are pertaining specifically to the pre-K and I can go back and then we can have other pre-K providers talk about their programs and what's going on in the pre-K early Ed world, and then we can go back and I can share like my other general case six and really what's going on with, mostly what I'd like to just present to the board is, I've talked a lot about SWIFT and our SWIFT partnership and so what that looks like, that, here at Oak Grove for the last year, okay? But we can start with, just kinda focus on pre-K, preschool with Head Start, with Deb? Okay, how's that?
So we all remember, it was probably close to a year ago that, maybe a little, maybe closer to February, that the board, you know, encouraged us to pursue looking at a public pre-K. It seemed that Oak Grove had the space to move forward. And so committee of Janice and Deb, myself, Lyle, Ron Staley, Maureen Young, met on many occasions to really kinda ironed out what's, what's it gonna look like in terms of pre-K? What does it look like in terms of a collaboration with Head Start? And so we went through all that, we went through the licensing process and, and here we are. I will say that while I'm just kind of putting some finishing touches of looking at this, it's about 2:30 today is when I got the call that pre-K had a major leak. And I'm like, so I hope that's not any kind of an omen as to how things are going since we're best we're talking about, but anyway, here's just a couple. Yeah, I could throw pictures in. That was our troll day and just a couple of our kiddos. So just some real quick basic information of where we stand right now. We have 13 students, seven of those 13 qualify under Head Start. All of our children do participate in our universal, universal meal, so that's, that's free breakfast, free lunch, the fresh fruits and vegetable snack program. And that they do follow the WSESU calendar, they're here at 8:15 morning, so a little bit earlier, but basically they run at 8:15 to 2:40, 2:45 school day, just like the rest of our kids do. We do not provide any holiday vacation or after-school care here. So their day looks, you know, we're trying to get them to look, I'm sure like, you know, I would love to, I was at a, you know, certainly, I have pre-K providers that are in the, that have been doing this for, you know, umpteen years and by no means what we're doing is something magical and special and so, I mean, it is magical and special, it's not anything more than what our community providers have been doing for years. So I do wanna make sure that, you know, everybody understands that I'm just showing what we're doing here. So as members of our community, they do attend All School Sing. They didn't do that right from the beginning, it was really important to get them acclimated to being in a big school setting. The first time we had them, invited them to All School Sing, I asked the sixth graders 'cause I thought, you know, a big kid with a little person, they can be a little buddy and the sixth graders were, you know, some of them were like, yeah, that's great, some of them were like, really? But, you know, the pre-Ks, the students, they were not interested in having a big person, they just kinda grabbed onto their teachers like, oh no, please, I don't wanna go with them. So it's like, oh, bad idea Jerry, you don't know what you're doing and so we'll just stick to their little group and so the whole partnership is getting better, but at the beginning wasn't such a great idea. But now they come in, they attend All School Sing and they get instruction from Andy Davis, our music director, which is really helpful. So once a week, Andy meets with them, teaches them several of the songs so that they are, you know, participating in those, those sing. At least one of the songs that he teaches them is performed the following Wednesday at All School Sing. They have live time in here with Lexi Oliver and then they have half an hour of art instruction with our art teacher. Other school events that they do, we have our annual walk-in field day this year. Normally, it has been the last few years down at Fort Dummer. This year, we got permission to go just down the field to the Little League Field, which was great because my first year here when I was taking the whole school, Kelly can remember, because Kelly probably talked about me behind my back at one point. Because I said, oh, we're all gonna go for a whole school walk and they're, okay, and you know, and we did and it was okay, but you know, it got better that's next year. This year, we brought pre-K and all the way up to grade six, so we went down to the Little League Field and they had games and we had popsicles and so that was, that was great. So they participated that, they participated in our pancake, our pancake community breakfasts. Curriculum night, we focused on math and what math looks like and so our teachers in pre-K also had, you know, their, some of their math lessons as parents were coming in and moving around, like what does math instruction look like in pre-K? You know, all the times we think of like, you know, well, they're not adding or subtracting, but you know, they're, they're doing a lot of shapes and numbers and number ID, which I'm sure you guys can even talk a little bit more, but they are, you know, adding. They're, you know, if you're putting two things together, two things over here, how many do you need for, for one more? And so there's a lot more math literacy instruction that's happening that probably I wasn't necessarily aware of, you know, that there is. Winter carnival and then we had like a movie time thing and so our winter carnival was from our trolls. So again, they're very much a part of what we do here. I also threw this together, not to, to bore you, but to give you a little idea, this is after our very first assessment. So this is all 13 of our kiddos. This is like our beginning fall benchmark of where they are, you know, how they're, what they're looking like. Social emotional, you might be like, oh my gosh, it's so low, but this is pretty typical of, I think of a four-year-old, this is, you know, being able to manage their feelings. So, you know, if they're having their little meltdowns, they're fighting over toys and they're trying to figure out the whole sharing thing and communicating with words as opposed to just grabbing, that's part of the social emotional connection, following instructions, how well they can do with, when an adult is setting limits and expectations for them. So they're all working on it. The physical needs are all those physical motor movements. So we're, let's see, I think I've kinda lost my train of thought, sorry.
Can I ask a question about these? When you're looking at these standards, are the, the standard that they're either below or meeting the developmental standard for beginning of year or end of year?
Right now, this is for the beginning of. Right now, this is for the beginning of this year.
Okay, so these are kids like 69% are below where they would be expected to be for their age at the beginning of Pre-K?
That's my understanding, yes, for where they are.
Okay.
So, Head Start requires that this assessment is performed three times a year. So we will be doing that three times a year. The two assessments right now, we just finished one in December. The next one is due just before February vacation, so it's like, it's really tight. It's a lot of work to do all this because this is the document and they have to have, you know, examples of work for all of those different components that they're looking at for each child. So it's a lot of work and to have it in that short amount of time, I agree with the teachers. It's, it's not ideal because, I mean, what kind of, how much growth are you expected to see between December and like February? I know, and then they'll do it again in June. But the nice thing is that, you know, just to have this, so this is a timeline of what Head Start and as well as myself expect to have with teachers in terms of communicating with the families around your student. You know, what are your desires and wishes for your child? So it's a lot of communication with the parents. So they do home visits in August, November during our fall conferences. They met with families again and just talked about like, how are things going? What, you know, what are you hearing at home? You know, what are you, what are you seeing as growth? So they start to set some goals. January conferences or two January in-service days is when they will present, they'll meet with the parents and they'll present the first round of assessments in March. They will present round two assessments and then end of the year final conferences, they'll present the rest.
Can you say presenting assessments, are you talking about TS Gold assessment?
Yes. And it's, and it's not, because we're not going to send them home. So it's really, this is just, these are also, as all of you know, these are benchmarks. These are just, like, on that particular day when we were looking at certain things or in that moment of time, this is, this is kind of where your child's at. But it's really about that communication with the families. And, you know, again, what are your hopes and dreams for your, for your child? Deb, do you have anything else to add to that? Or Janice, do you have more to add?
No.
Because that's really all I have as far as, you know, as looking at Oak Grove Pre-K. Transition meetings with Brattleboro. You know, all of our Pre-K providers for children that are four going into kindergarten have transition meetings with kindergarten teachers. So there's kindergarten registration for children who are going to be five by September 1st that comes up in the spring. And then once children are placed into three different schools, then those kindergarten teachers meet with the providers, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, you should, you can head sit up. To get more information about each, about each child. So it's, you know, it's, it's been wonderful having them. They're really becoming more comfortable in the building. They don't get out of the building. I mean, they're down in our old kindergarten wing, which has direct access to the playground. Wonderful access for parents to come in and out of the building, to sign students in and out of the building. A lot of parent involvement during the winter carnival, we had some parents. During some of the holidays, we have parents. We have winter sports coming up and that was always like, okay, how do we do that? Are they going to be involved and they're not going to be involved? So as far as winter sports, we're offering an on-campus option this year for all of our students, including all Pre-K. So all Pre-K is going to be during our four afternoons of winter sports. So some Pre-K, some of our four-year-olds, when they nap, they are out all afternoon. But those that are, you know, the opportunity for them to go and build snow forts outside or practice some snow shoeing. We're going to have some crafts inside and maybe even some different cooking opportunities. So there'll be older kids, a variety of students that will be here on campus during winter sports during those four sessions. And then all the Pre-K students will be here as well. A lot of times what we found even for the winter carnival, it's, our winter carnival is set up in the gym and it's run by kind of the older kids and then the younger kids come down. And there's like little bowling games and just like carnival kind of games. And we have themes. This year, and it's overwhelming for everyone. And so we set up the schedule so that the Pre-K could come in, have access to the games all by themselves, get a little snack from the popcorn and, you know, the snack table. And then they kind of went in and they finished out their, their day. As opposed to being there with like kindergarten, I mean, with a hundred, you know, 100 kids, it would be just, it was overwhelming for some of them anyway, but we did a great job. As you can see with the little hair. But as far as, you know, I'd just like to now just open it up to the rest of our community partners as to share all the things that are happening in the Pre-K or early ed world.
Well, one thing, I'll mention that the Oak Grove preschool teacher is taking part in a community-based professional learning community that is targeted at new licensed preschool teachers. So one of the things that I think we'd like to highlight in this presentation tonight is the interplay, the interaction between what happens in, for preschoolers in school buildings in our Brattleboro schools. And with the community preschool teachers, as Jerry was saying, who have lots of years of experience of doing this work. So we've been, some of us have been fortunate enough to be involved in funding, getting funding for and running two professional learning communities. One that's targeted at new teachers and one targeted at experienced teachers. So there's probably a total of 15 or 16 teachers that are getting professional development, networking with each other and with kindergarten teachers as well. So a combination of preschool and kindergarten teachers. That PLC is new this year and it's been very positively received by both the preschool and the kindergarten teachers. And very excited about that. So I think I'll start just by responding to, I think, one of the questions from a school board member in an email was, "Give us a little primer on what is Act 166." And that's our state's law that provides universal access to high-quality Pre-K education. And that can take place in a school building, as we heard about Oak Grove's program. And it can take place with qualified providers who are out in the community. Right now, there are a total of 182 three, four, and five-year-olds who were not yet in kindergarten who are getting public Pre-K in Brattleboro. 182 Brattleboro three-to-five-year-olds. Some of them are at Oak Grove, some of them are at Little Red House, the Winston Proudie Center, Hilltop. And with a total of 16 different community partners. You might remember because some of you signed the contracts between Brattleboro Town School Board and those private providers that established this partnership that we have and that goes on to serve these 182 kids. Forty of them are Head Start children that go to the Canal Street School. And six of them go, six, six are the Oak Grove non-Head Start kids. So the remaining, do quick math, 140, so are out in our community partnerships. Melissa, do you want to talk about what?
What it means?
What it means to be a partner?
Oh, sure. It's funny because I was making up my notes about what it means to be a partner. Excuse my croaky throat this evening, hazard of my position. I also should say I'm, I'm a teacher, I'm the director and head teacher at Little Red House Early Learning Program. It's a licensed home program, which means I work with 12 children a day. I have about 15 children enrolled, not, not all the students are full-time. And of those 15, 10 are Pre-K partners, are to access the Pre-K funds through the state. I'm also here as, I'm also the facilitator for the Wyndham Early Childhood Educators Co-op, which is a very strong group of early childhood educators within our community. We meet once, meet, once a month and do a lot of networking and professional development together. So just wanted to put that there, let you know what's going on there. And we welcome all new early educators who want to join us. So happy to give information to anyone who needed that. And I'm also part of the Building Bright Futures Council. And this kind of came out of the Building Bright Futures Council a year ago, wanting to create stronger bridges between kindergarten and Pre-K. Because often I think we feel disconnected from one another. And that early ed is actually, you know, a pretty long learning continuum that begins, you know, at birth. And Vermont considers it all the way through grade three, age eight. And so it would be wonderful for us to have a greater, greater connection so that we can best serve the children. But yes, I will get back to what I'm supposed to say.
It's all good.
It's all good, right, yeah, yeah. So in order to become a partner, you have to have a qualified program. And to be, you have to go through a process with the Agency of Education, a pre-qualification process. And so that means you have to meet a quality program recognition standard. So that means, one, you can have that through NACI, which is a nationally accredited group. And, or two, you can be, you can have the STARS program, which is our very own program here in Vermont. It's a quality standard tool recognition, I guess they call it a recognition standard, but on what is a quality program. So in order to be a STARS, I'd like to just show you my file. This is this year's application for my STARS. So every year we have to reapply, we have to have at least three STARS, excuse me, we have to have four STARS, a minimum of four STARS. However, a partner can have three STARS with an approved plan to work towards four within two years. But every year we have to, we have to update our application. And then every three years, we have to do the full application. And so I just wanted to share with you, I went to five STARS this year. And so my applicant, yes, thank you, is a little thicker perhaps.
Five being the highest.
But five, yeah. And many of our partners have five-star programs, many of the partners that you partner with, five stars. So you have to have that. You also have to have a licensed teacher. Either a licensed teacher who works directly in the classroom with your students or if you do not have a licensed teacher, you're allowed to contract with a licensed teacher. And so if you're in a small family program, a registered program, a licensed teacher can come in for three hours a week to provide hands-on learning with you, active learning and supervision and as a resource. I've been that person, I've been a licensed teacher for a small program. And it's just, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to share knowledge and experience. And it's a great way for those smaller programs to be able to serve our students, our Pre-K students. So licensed teacher, or you can contract one. Let's see what else we have to do. Sorry, I've used my notes. We have to have an approved curriculum that's approved by the AOE. And so, and our curriculum has to align with the Vermont Early Learning Standards. I don't know if you're all familiar with the Vermont Early Learning Standards. But this is what we're talking about, that learning continuum from birth to age eight, basically grade three. Vermont spent a great deal of time, I think you worked on these, Janice, as well.
Right.
And so if you haven't read them, they're really great bedtime reading. Actually, they're filled with, a lot of, it's filled with a lot of great knowledge and it's an excellent resource for everyone who's invested or a stakeholder in early ed. So our curriculum has to be approved and, oh, we have to prove the curriculum valid. Thank you, there it is, on the next page, TS Gold. What Jerry brought up was the TS Gold report from this, from your first benchmark, which we just did in December. TS Gold is an online assessment tool and it actually goes from birth to age eight as well. It's also connected with the creative curriculum. And so some, I meet with a number of other early educators throughout the state and many of them use that curriculum and aligns very nicely with this assessment tool. However, this assessment tool is also aligned with our state early learning, our VELLS. And it's also aligned with the Head Start framework, I believe the outcomes for Head Start, right?
Yeah.
So it's a great tool for all of us to be using. It's extremely extensive. You know, we have social, we have different arenas, the social and emotional, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, mathematics, science and technology, social studies and the arts. We are observing, making observations of children in all of these different categories, these arenas, topics, whatever you'd like to call them. And within those are 38 objectives. And so when it's time to come up to our benchmark as we did in, what was it, December 6th or something like that? I think it was like the 6th or something, yes, December 6th. We have to have observations for each child in all of these objectives. So it's, it's, it's a lot. But it's well worth the time that you spend with it, especially if you're a new teacher. I think this tool is very helpful in helping you really define what you're looking for in development with young children, whatever the arena is, is. It's fun to use your phone app with or your iPad. One of the great ways to document is through photographs and video. And so it's wonderful to document. I love to do my videotaping now with the children because then I can really sit back, I can watch it again and I can pull out that information that I need for the children and the objectives. So do you, do you find that helpful?
I find the videos helpful as well because you can catch so much later and still be able to be in the moment with the child a little bit more, someone's videoing. And when you do TS Gold, you also have to go through a training process to be able to use the assessment tool correctly, including a certification of your reliability in the way that you rate the children and assess them. So it is, it is pretty comprehensive and that there's a lot of steps to make sure that you're doing it appropriately with the students.
There's a real... You also have to, of course, be licensed and/or registered with the... You also have to, of course, be licensed and/or registered with the C, the Child Development Division, CCP. And these are our childcare licensing regulations. And I guess one thing I wanted to say too, was that, yes, I'm a private partner and I have to meet all of this criteria, but so do pre-K programs in the public school. We're all doing the same thing. We all have to meet this criteria in, um, in order to allow our families to access the
So we, um, we think of this as a mixed delivery model. So the, the mix, mixture is that you could be in Head Start, you could be in a public school, you can be in a community partner, private provider. And you're all, all of those kids are students of the local school board. So when you think about preschool in Brattleboro, I know you think about Head Start because Deb is here every week or every, at every meeting. And I know you think about Oak Grove because Jerry is here and it's a, it's a new program that you all were participating in. But I think it's important to remember, there's, you know, 140 other kids who are experiencing high-quality pre-K in a variety of different locations throughout our supervisor union and beyond. So in my mind, I, I think about, if we are serving all of those kids, how do we make sure that there are strong connections between the schools and, and our private partners? And I think this mixed delivery model poses challenges and opportunities for them. You know, some of the challenges are, we don't necessarily govern all of those 16 programs. We, they, they, the teachers are employed by their organization or their agency. As long as they meet the standards that the state has set forth, they're able to provide that education. Those teachers don't necessarily get paid on the same wage scale as a public school teacher. In fact, I think probably none of them do. They don't get the same benefits package, yet they do very similar work. Those are issues that go beyond what a school board, a local school board can deal with. Those are issues in early childhood education nationwide. But the opportunities for bringing us closer together, I think, are really great ones. And I'm proud of the professional learning communities that we have. I'm proud of the work that we have done together over the last several years. And I think about how we could be even stronger and grow more together as partners. I think about professional development, access to professional development funds, which are part of any teacher's contract in a public school. But our, our private partners don't necessarily have that access. Curriculum, you know, we, in early childhood, there's a variety of curricular models, beginning with, you know, observe the kids and see what they're interested in, and build curriculum based on what they are telling you they would like to learn about, all the way up through more scope and sequence, prepared curriculum that are focused on content areas like literacy and mathematics. Our schools in kindergarten and first, second grade use specific literacy programs and math programs. I think there's opportunities for preschool to kind of learn, decide whether they would like to align with the curriculum in public schools. And we, um, you know, excited about exploring that with partners who are interested. One more thing, and I, I want you to be able to ask questions too, but I wanted you also know that the legislature this year is looking at some recommendations that the Agency of Education has put forth to change Act 166. They want to keep access, they want to keep many of the same things that I've just described, but they, up to now, this has been overseen by two state agencies, AOE and the Agency of Human Services. And there's a recommendation now for the Agency of Education to have sole administrative authority over public pre-K. And for the Agency of Education to regulate school-based programs, and for the Department of Children and Families to regulate the community-based programs. Now, that may be of great interest to you, Jerry, because it will simplify some of the duplicative regulatory issues that you deal with, with schools, preschools and public So we, we'll see what the legislature decides to do with those recommendations, and I, I know I'm going to be keeping on top of that.
As will I. As will all the kids. As will we all.
Do you know how many of the partners that we have, of, with the partners that we have, how many of those kids are doing only 10 hours a week?
I think it's a small amount.
I would think almost none.
Almost none.
No, there are, no, there are, there are some, and, you know, it's really wonderful because with the partners who, for those kids who are doing only 10 hours a week and they have family situations that can accommodate that, they're not paying any tuition for those 10 hours a week. You know, Robin was talking about the, you know, that the 10 hours a week versus 30 hours a week. Families' tuition is defrayed up to that 10 hours a week. If they...
That was my last question.
Yeah. Many families are paying their providers for the excess of, over 10 hours a week.
Do you know what the percentage is of just 10-hour students over those two, like, yeah, I mean?
I don't really know, but I would say it's, oh, maybe 15 to 20%.
15 to 20% of all the kids that are going are only 10 hours a week.
Yeah. I, I can get back to you on that.
It's hard financially for a, for a standalone program to sustain itself with, you know, on 10 hour, on part-time enrollment. Most, most early care and learning facilities have to have, you know, they may have part-time slots, but they also need those full-time slots as well because of the, just to cover the cost of having the facility. So it's a complicated web.
I think when I was enrolling my kids, that there was a couple of programs that offered half-day programs, that you could do a two-day or a three-day program, or a five-day. So it was the kids that are going on the two days that are getting basically a free ride, and then the other three days filled by a different student that's paying for one day a week, and then the five-day kids. But it was my understanding that the, it depends on the tuition of the school, whether that's actually free, because they're just getting the amount that the state has designated. But if the school's own tuition is higher than that per day, the, the parent still may end up paying a little bit, depending on the school.
That changed with, this year, Act 166, I think, for the last two years.
Okay.
They, um...
I missed out on that.
You missed out on that, yeah.
You have another one coming.
But, but one of the things that's really important about Act 166 funding is that that, um, that funding really does help to make early care and learning affordable for families. So there are other, you know, parents can access things like the Child Care Financial Assistance Program if they meet income requirements. But, you know, full-time care for someone who's working 40 hours is quite expensive. And this 10-hour tuition subsidy is really important to make sure that, you know, some families can actually access a high-quality care. So it's, it's, you know, an important boost in access for folks who, children who would be in some other situation if they didn't have that subsidy.
Other comments from anyone?
Just building on that, it's also helped us support more families beyond the 10 hours. So with the help for the funding for those 10 hours, our, our minimum would be for a child to come 15 hours, so the five half-days a week. But we have some families that we have the money from the pre-K, and then with school funding or financial aid, we subsidize the rest. Or families that might need 30 hours of care, and the pre-K funding helps with some of it, a school grant helps with some of it, and the families pay for some of it. So it's, it's helped us support a broader economic diversity of families and have more families able to access our programs.
I think that is the key question, that access to high quality. You know, I'm very proud that we live in a state that is working very hard, you know, to make that happen for every young child. Because we know, you know, I'm sorry, I have to get this in, we know that early ed, this is the most important time in brain development for a child. And we have to ensure that these children from eight, not even just our three and four-year-olds, but from birth, are in high-quality programs with teachers, or providers, or professionals, see, whatever you'd like to call us, who are knowledgeable, who, you know, know how to create rich and learning environments for young children.
On that point, as Jenny mentioned, around 15 teachers are involved in the professional learning communities. Are some of them private and some of them school-based?
Yeah.
And I don't, the other thing is, talking about professional development, the, is there some way, I know we're all looking for ways that we can help. And we obviously can't pay everybody in the business, but we can help with professional development. That's something that we do, and now that we've got a pre-K and hopefully we're not knowing before long, and we're actively involved systemically in the process, we're going to be providing professional development to our people. And I think, I think this has come up before, I'm not sure in which context, but can we look at expanding to include as many people as can get there, whenever it's scheduled?
It would be very well received.
Yeah.
And then possibly receptive.
I provide a lot of professional development for preschool teachers. And, you know, I, my staff is the, the early childhood special educators. So whenever, you know, whenever we sponsor a training or a workshop, we invite preschool teachers to that. WSESU is, now has three public school-based preschools. And I know that we, we've tried to build in funds in this next budget year for a more robust preschool professional development during in-service time.
I didn't know about your staff doing that already. I'm glad it's open, very inclusive.
Oh, yeah.
People that can help.
And that is, that is a huge barrier, the cost of a lot of really high-quality training can be a barrier, because a lot of people in our field that are contracting are not making a salary that really supports some really high-quality training. So the more that's available to, to us, and I know you have worked on that a lot, is certainly very helpful and well-received.
I'll also mention that Janice also provides training to parents, and she in the past has done parenting workshops for families with young children through both EES and, and in other venues. And I think, you know, besides a very close link between early ed and, you know, and public schools, I think that there's a lot, there's a really open field in thinking about how both institutions work with families in their transition from one system to the others. I think what's beautiful about the pre-K partnerships is that there's a lot of family choice. People can pick the place they want their child to go. And, you know, when they come up into this system, it's a great system, but there's always room for work on helping families to do well here after being in the diverse, and the really nurturing environments that a lot of pre-K providers provide for families. Because, you know, those pre-K providers are really experts on, they're co-experts with their, with the parents on their kids, and it's a very mutually supportive relationship. And having that ethic, you know, continue into these schools, I think, is, there's lots of room for growth there.
Any other questions, Board? Thank you all for coming and giving some thought to this.
Thank you for welcoming us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a good topic. I think we've hit it on a lot of different levels tonight, more than I thought we were going to. Okay, so, folks, 10 minutes. And...
I think Jerry has more.
Jerry.
Do I have time?
No, you have as much time as you might.
No, I don't.
We would have to go for another three-plus hours to make our record, so.
Well, I think we'd, I'll be like snow angels if we stayed in here for three more hours. So, I won't do that. So like I said earlier, I, I really just wanted to kind of give you a little bit more information about our SWIFT partnership, provide you some student data. We already talked about preschool, so I'll skip over that. And the future, look, I don't have anything to present on Oak Grove Student Leaders, but I would like to ask the Board to at some point put on the agenda. I know that Mark, Andy, and definitely Oak Grove, we spend, some of our, our students do remarkable things as student leaders, and to put on a future agenda for a significantly adequate amount of time for each of the three, well, at least Oak Grove, to have the students come and to provide, to give you a presentation. That would be much more entertaining than what I'm about to provide for you.
Okay.
So if you could put that on the, in the minutes, please, to take the time that the student leaders could come and, and present some of their work. So just, remind you, so SWIFT is a school-wide integrated framework for transformation. It's an organization that is out of University of New Hampshire. It is paid through a BEST grant that the district has applied for. We were fortunate enough to get another year with SWIFT. Currently, Lyle could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that currently it's only Oak Grove and BAMs, the middle school right now, that are continuing with another year of partnering with, with SWIFT. Some of the things that they, they work on with us are, they really have, they, when I first met them, they were like, we will do what you want us to do. You know, where do we want to go? And so we spent a lot of time talking about that. Coaching, facilitating is really the key that embodies the work that they do with my staff here in, in the building. One of the first things that, oh, sorry, that they, I've worked with, their leader, my leadership team here works with SWIFT. The direction alignment, Kelly should be laughing about that, that comes from, right, our Center for Creative Leadership, of course. But it's really about what are we doing here in a building as, as a community of educators with this outside resource of experts to come in and to identify what is our direction and what, and making sure that we're all in line... and what, and making sure that we're all aligned, that every staff member, every teacher, parent, all the way up, you know, central office, community partners that we have, understand what our tasks are and what our goals are, and that we're willing to make commitments towards those. So one of the first things that we did last spring is we realized that, at some point, I realized coming in, it's like, you know, our parent handbook has a vision statement that says this, and our website has a different vision statement, and that's a problem. We need to, you know, let's take a look at that. So we really kind of looked at them, we looked at the SU vision statement and vision, mission statement, we reflected on that. There are a couple of key areas that we wanted to make sure that we highlighted. The first area is really being kind, safe, responsible, respectful. That comes from our PBIS, Guiding Principles. And then the second is to foster culturally rich and inclusive environment. We wanted to make sure that inclusive, the word inclusive was really at the forefront of the work that we're doing with SWIFT. Because again, coming here, seeing that there's, there are, I don't know exactly a percentage, I'd have to go back and look at that, it doesn't really matter, but there was enough of a significant proportion of students, in my opinion, that were not receiving a tier-one academic instruction with their grade-level peers in a classroom setting. They were receiving it in more smaller groups, isolated, tier-three, specialized classrooms, totally isolated from their grade-level peers. And I wanted to understand, why is that? And what are we going to do about that? And that doesn't embody this idea about being inclusive. And so that's why we made sure that word was in there. So the other thing that SWIFT does is that they do what's called a fit assessment. And it really looks at the fidelity of our programming, the fidelity of our leadership, fidelity of our MTSS, our behavioral things. And it really, when we first did it, we don't, it's not a self-assessment. We set up groups, so they interviewed me, they interviewed, well, basically every staff member, they interviewed, they interviewed folks from central office, they interviewed some of our community partners, they interviewed parents, they interviewed kids. They cruised through the building, they did some observations to see if what we're talking about with them behind closed doors is really evident in the classroom and in the building. And it really gave us that opportunity to, like, where are we? And what is, based on this, what do they see are some of our strengths? And what do they see as some of the areas that, in which we could focus on? So, first year, last, 2016, is when we had our first fifth assessment, and then we just completed it again in November. I have some other slides that I'm going to bore you with here real quickly to kind of explain a little bit. But these are the five categories of SWIFT that they look at. They look at administrative leadership, that's your building leadership, not just from myself, but also your teacher leaders in your building. Your MTSS, your multi-tiered systems of support as far as academic interventions, academic supports, as well as behavioral supports. Integrated education, that comes along with the idea about being inclusive, how many students are accessing the education, like I said, with your grade-level peers, family engagement, inclusive policy. So overall, we were very pleased with the results, and I have a little bit more spelled out to see why. So under administrative leadership, they look at, they divide it up into site leadership and educational support. Some of the things to highlight are that we use data, so that boosted us way up. A year ago, we were using data, but apparently whatever we said this year, whatever we were able to show in terms of evidence, showed that we were doing it more with fidelity. We were monitoring our progress and students' progress, we were also spending more time evaluating our outcomes. Which really, a lot of the assessments that we're doing with students, that hasn't changed. But it's how we're using that data and how evaluating that has changed. We, I think we've become better at it. And not only with our benchmark meetings, three times a year, we have vertical team meetings because we are single-strand, so we have a K-1 team, but we have, as opposed to grade-level teams. So we have K-1, we have 2-3, and then we have a 4-5-6 team. We have academic support, specialized, that's all part of those teams as well. EST Weekly's vertical teams meet at least twice a month, sometimes they're meeting, you know, two or three times. I have vertical teams that meet every week during their lunch in addition to after-school, just because there's a lot to talk about, a lot of interventions. And then this education support, that's really, that comes right back to, you know, the SU. That's the mentor program that we have for new teachers. That is, here in our building, are, you know, that we have had Reading Street now for five years consistently. So it's a comprehensive literacy program that we've committed to. We've switched over to Eureka Math the last two, two years now. We are focusing our faculty meetings, our professional development on UDL, which is Universal Design for Learning. And it's really, it's a frame, it's that thinking about how do I plan for participation for all members of my students that come into my classroom? Not just for the ones that can, but all of them. And it's the planning ahead, planning for participation, planning for their membership in your class. And that's part of that inclusion, you know? First of all, they're, they're members, but then how do they participate? And then you get to being able to assess them. So again, with, within the district, you have your literacy coaches, you have your curriculum coordinators and the peer support. This district is very, very strong in educational support. Under multi-tiered systems of support, some of the highlights to represent our improvements, again, those research-based literacy and math curriculum of Reading Street, ECRI, Eureka Math, I know Mark talked about this a lot, as well as Andy. The tier-two interventions to support literacy and math curriculum, the tier-three interventions that we do have in place, all of these interventions are in place for all grade levels. Oak Grove is a very, you know, we're a small school, and I may get myself in trouble to put this on the air right now, but because, but I've said it in other meetings, we're a really small school. And so when you, the way special ed works in terms of time studies and our special ed teachers have, like all of them, is required to do a time study. And that means that they get money reimbursed, Frank was here, he could explain it to you much better than I could, reimbursed for the hours that they're working with students on IEPs. They're allowed a certain percentage of students who are not on IEPs. It's very complicated, and frankly, I don't care about time studies. It's about the students in the building who need help and need support. Now, while we're very good about making sure we don't get ding-dong, we don't get charged additional money or whatever, but it's really, we're not going to wait to say, "Oh, the student isn't doing very well, maybe we should see if they need an IEP and then we'll think about interventions." No. And I don't think any of us will do that. We're, like, what do they need? What do we have? If we don't have it, how do we create it? And who is here in our building who can provide that? And that's what we do. And so when, sometimes we have, families will come, "Oh, they need an IEP, IEP." It's like, okay, but there may not be much difference. So an IEP might be just identifying, you know, and helping us to identify a little bit more about what different disability might be for that child, to help us focus in. But really, the interventions are still going to be in place. Does that make sense a little bit? So again, those, those tier-two, tier-three interventions and the staff that we have to provide those are why, when you see our, some of our results, that's why our results are as, that we're doing as well as we're doing. And of course, then we have our inclusive behavior is the same, the same idea. Our STEP program that is modeled after Academy's STEP program does consist of a BCBA, consists of an intensive special educator and three, two registered behavior technicians and one STEP parent. To, to help to keep students in class so that they can access their learning, so that they're not being sent, you know, to a different facility or a different placement, I should say. You know, this is where they're going to be able to grow, this is where they're going to be able to have structure and have the best chance at being successful. Not necessarily here at Oak Grove, but in our public schools. So with that integration, minimal growth, again, not all Oak Grove students are still receiving tier-one academic instruction with their grade-level peers. There are limited opportunities for all students to work collaboratively with their peers, and not all are considered members of their grade-level classroom. This is our goal, we are working very hard on that. There are, and most of the students that we're referring to do have very significant, significant needs, which makes it challenging for them to be reading fourth-grade Reading Street material where they might be still at a first-grade reading level. And so we're making those, those adjustments. The last one, we're talking about, not all Oak Grove students are considered members of the grade-level classroom. That again is, you know, when I first came here, it was truly a goal of mine, when I'm hearing a student say, "Why do we keep going into third grade? I'm not a third grader." It's like, yes, you are a third grader. And they need to, and see themselves as a third grader and playing with other third graders because that is their social group. And yet we were kind of isolating them a whole time. So we've, we've broken down some of those barriers. It's challenging, it's very hard work, and, and that's what I tell my staff all the time when they're like pulling their hair out going, "I, I really want to do my best for this job, I just don't know, you know, how to do that." And, you know, if it was easy, it would have happened a long time ago. So it's, it's hard work, but it's the right work to do for these kids. Family partnership, families of all children, our PTO has been and is really phenomenal this year. They're really working on more of family leadership, family education, as opposed to like fundraising. So they, they were involved with having a community book fair, as opposed to a scholastic book fair, that went very well. They were involved with setting up a book group and a discussion group for the book that the kids were also reading, Brown Girl Dreaming. They've been instrumental in bringing in some guest speakers for our kids during all school things. So they're trying to definitely be part of the educational decisions and educational process of our environment. Areas still needing attention, the LEA, that's the big, that's the big school district, reports to community stakeholders at least every six months. So this is kind of like the work that we're doing right now, that all three schools have done, that SWIFT feels that it's important for all of you as board members, as well as...
Excuse me, Jerry, what is LEA?
LEA is...
Local Education Authority.
There you go.
Is what?
Local Education Authority.
Local Education Authority.
Yeah. So it's, it's not only, yeah, it's your board, it's also, an LAA is used in, as an administrator in a special ed meeting, a director, a superintendent, and advocate, yep, school advocate could be. And so what they're asking here, or why, you know, even our score is pretty decent, it still didn't really see much growth. This is, because having this reporting out that we're, I'm doing right now, that Green Street did and Academy did, wasn't really done in the past. I mean, we have like our month reports, but we don't necessarily give a big report as far as how the schools are doing. And we, at, at Oak Grove anyway, we haven't in the past had like a community night to just talk about our, our goals, our action plan, and how we're doing. So SWIFT, SWIFT would like to see us doing more of that in terms of, so that your community and your partners and mostly your families know what's going on.
Could you speak a little bit about the last bullet point there? I'm not quite understanding what's meant by that.
To avoid duplicating efforts operating in silos within the district. So what that means is that, and I didn't put this in, this was in here, this and that, but it's kind of, you know, this, like a forty-sixth thing. So, so that we're not operating in silence. We have, there's three schools, three town schools. So are we, like, we have a STEP program that was, all three of us now have a STEP program, but it was modeled after Academy's program. That goes, we're not dup, we're duplicating efforts because we need to, but we're not operating in silence. We have some, we have Greg Stoller, who's a BCBA, who oversees all the STEP programs, who meets with the STEP staff, who has professional development with the STEP staff. These are just examples.
Okay. So it's kind of like the opposing side of the third point, or how, well, are we sharing the things that work between the three schools?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. So some of our goals that we're going to be working on, increasing our participation, continuing to increase our participation in tier-one instruction for all students, our professional development, universal, universal design for learning. In the smaller print, this is what SWIFT is going to do to help us reach those goals. They will be doing some onsite and coaching for helping the teachers with universal design and differentiating their lessons. Because you have to have that available in your classroom, in your classroom. Universal design, I don't know if, it comes from ADA. And it comes from this idea of like having a handicap ramp so that people can get into your building. You can say, "Oh, I want everybody to come into my building," but if you don't have access for everybody to come into the building. And then once they're in here, if your doors are thirty-two inches as opposed to forty inches wide, then they can't get into the doorways, they can't use the bathroom. So that's all thinking ahead, what do you need to provide so that people can access your building? Universal design is the same thought process. Don't wait until the students hear, but what you need to make sure, whether, from your, your environment, your space, your furniture needs, your curriculum, you know, what do you need to do to change that so that students are not just, you don't just say, "Oh, isn't this great? We're going to have students with significant learning disabilities and we're all going to have them come and sit in my class." But then we're still going to teach the same way we were teaching before. You can't do that. It's not, you know, it's not right. That's not setting up, that's not setting up an inclusive environment. All you're doing is saying that you've, you've kind of allowed them to come, but you have to provide them with ample opportunity to engage in the curriculum, to be able to, as it says up here, to, you know, to show that they understand, to express what they've learned, and to be able to do that in a variety of different modalities. One of the books that, we're going to be starting this, this winter, professional learning communities, reading the book as a staff, Design and Deliver, that was written by Louie Lord Nelson, and she's out of Indiana. And she's out of Indiana. And then, of course, many trainings. We're also going to be looking at a reliable and valid universal screening tool to identify at-risk social behavior. This is a goal that even, that PBIS, when we do our, our PBIS self-assessment, that they're also asking, are we, you know, do we have a universal screening tool to look at all kids? And at this time, we don't. We've, we think about it all the time, but we really haven't actively engaged in something. So, there's a lot of thought that needs to go into that, there are lots of different options out there, so we're not, we want to make sure that, one, it's, it's reliable, that, that there's some research base behind it, and it's going to give us, you know, what is it going to provide us, what are we going to do once we have it? And we screen all the students, what do we, what do we do with that information? And I'm going to go fast because you guys are all. And then, the resource mapping and matching tools, that is something that, again, SWIFT is going to help us do. That allows us to look at our different interventions. We'll look at it, first of all, we look at our student body. What are the needs of our, of our students? What interventions do we need to have? Who are the, what resources do we have to provide those interventions? What space is being used? So it's this huge, like, mapping grid, that you kind of put all things together. And then, they help, because they're good at it, they find the holes. Like, what are you heavy in? And how can you move these, if you're heavy in one area, how can you move some of those resources into an area that you weaken? To make sure that it's all covered.
Is this kind of the same type of thing you guys are talking about doing with looking at the building needs for the three buildings before you look at building a new modular? The same idea?
I would think so, yeah. So some of our data walks, again, basic factors is our K six, one hundred twenty-seven students, fifty-one percent are free or reduced. We have twenty-three students, twenty-three percent of our population are students with IEPs. Thirteen percent are students with a 504. Ten percent of our students are receiving STEP services.
Jerry, can you remind me the difference between IEP and a 504?
Sure. Anyway, also, I want to step in here as well. So an IEP is an individualized educational plan. It's saying that a student has a disability, so there are three gates that they have to go through to receive, to have IEP or qualify for special ed. And that is that there's a, there's a disability, that they're- that they have adverse effect in a learning area of math, literacy, or writing.
Speeches and-
And then, the other is the question of, do they require specialized instruction? So, student could have a disability. They might be diagnosed with, say, ADHD. But they are not in the lowest fifteenth percentile of their class. And so therefore, they don't need specialized instruction. But they, they might need to be, have protections under the Civil Rights Act of 504, because they have a disability that's been diagnosed, that has significantly impacted some of their-
Access to education.
Access to education, or other life daily activities. And so, do they need a 50, a protection for 504? The answer from a committee could be yes, and those would be setting up like accommodations for that child in the classroom. So that might, accommodations might be that they're allowed to have a fidget, that they need to have certain breaks, or that they have extended time on tests, or that they're going to take their test in a small group environment, as opposed to in the whole classroom. Any?
And from what you were saying before, am I right in understanding that even if there were students who did not qualify for an IEP or a 504, you might create some accommodations for those people, or support for them anyway? Because they just needed it, even if they didn't need all of the-
Yeah, yes, so then we all have, are all required by state law to have educational support teams, that at least ours meet weekly, I don't know, I think everybody meets weekly. And so, with educational support team, you might be talking about a student who doesn't have a diagnosis of any type of a disability, but yet is struggling either academically or behaviorally. And then they come to EST, and we can put, that's when we talk about what interventions need to be put in place. Are there certain accommodations that we want to do, so you can have an EST plan for, for students as well? Makes sense?
Yeah, and is that where you were saying that sometimes the special education teacher might allocate some of their hours there, even though they weren't on the time?
Yes, I think they're, I think they're allowed to allocate some of their, their time towards 504. And so, for what I was saying before is, if we have a student who we find is struggling, and they, and so we're talking about this particular student, often it comes up, it starts in vertical teams. They're talking about students, student work, what's, what's happening. Then they say, "We want to talk about the student in the larger EST." We come to EST, and we're like, okay, because we have an academic support person there, we have special ed there. Who, this is what the child needs, who has space, who can offer this? And we just, you just make it happen. Even though it started in the EST. And what special ed wants to do anyway, which we all need to do, is you look to see, does that intervention work? If it's working and the child now is like, wow, this is great, they're making progress, then great, keep doing it. If they're still not making progress, go back and look at, did we put in the right intervention? If, if we didn't, you know, and then, let's change it. Maybe it's a different person, maybe we, maybe we focused on the wrong thing. And then, again, you're kind of monitoring. And if you still, after a period of time, are noticing that this child is still, after all these interventions, all these changes, is still pretty flat, still doesn't seem to be making any headway, then you might make a referral for a special ed. Because there might be a, a diagnosis that we're just not able to, to figure out. Whereas with a lot of testing, they could, they could do that. So then it's like, so once you do more testing, then they're pinpointing what area that they really need work on, then, then we can create that intervention for them.
So, Jerry, before you leave this page, sorry, Spoon had something to, but am I correct in thinking that I could add up the students that are having some sort of special services? And get at that number and say, it's almost a third of the population, because it would be separate? The twenty-three percent and the thirteen percent? The ten percent may be all in those twenty-three and thirteen?
Well, so all twenty-nine, all of your students with IEPs are going to be receiving some level of tier, specialized instruction. Because that's why they have an IEP, it's in, it's in their IEP that they have specialized, a need for specialized instruction, so they have small group specialized instruction throughout the, the week, throughout the course of their academic week. 504 could, may or may not require small group academic instruction.
But those are different people, right? They could-
Those are different people, they cannot, they're not both.
So still, my statement is that thirty-six percent of the population of this school is getting some sort of specialized education beyond just what a normal classroom teacher would be doing. Is that right?
You could, you could posit that.
Is that true for you guys too?
Well, I don't know what percentages are off, off, off my head. But a 504 student, for example, I could be a 504 student if I am, if I am physically handicapped. So, and not to me, to access the building. It don't, don't necessarily require individualized instruction or, or support, but I, I require access. If it's a two-story building, then that might be an elevator. If it's, if it's this building, because it's, it's elevated by three steps, it has to be a ramp. So-
So those are people that probably have some sort of a physical disability and not necessarily a need for other instruction?
Those are disability, 504 is a disability, which can range, you know, we have, we have students that have eyesight. Just, you know, they're partially blind, legally blind, we have students that are deaf. It doesn't mean necessarily that they're getting, that they need support in instructional ways. It can, but doesn't necessarily, that's all encompassing. So, I don't know if that answered your question?
I think the key word is accommodation, so someone with a 504 needs an accommodation, but it may not be an accommodation for academic learning. It could be just an accommodation to be in a building access. Or that to have a smaller group size for testing, but they can test fine, it's just they need that smaller. Whereas an IEP, it's really about that, that extra support they need for academic.
I guess my question is, I was just looking at these numbers as a little shocked, because we're saying about us, maybe I'm not reading it right, then it's hopefully taken out the 504s, but it's still twenty-three plus seven percent for the stu, students. But that's a third of the kids in the school that are requiring something additional from the classroom teacher than would-
What I don't have on here as well are ESTs. So students that, that are on some sort of EST plan, that there's also accommodations for that. Students that, you know, again, that are receiving STEP services. So, in, in a, in, in a classroom, you, it's not unusual to have over fifty percent of your students in my, in, you know, in a, in a classroom. I have a classroom right now that eighty-nine percent of that, in that student body, now it's, you know, I have small numbers, but still, eighty-nine percent of that one class that I cannot, you know, have some sort of, of a plan. Or have been impacted by trauma, are part of DCF, are homeless. I mean, so it's, it's, it's a challenging group.
And that's, those, those statistics are really beckoned in Head Start. And we have thirty percent of our kids with IEPs, and probably ninety percent of our kids have been affected.
But your kids are selected. When we, when we go through the screening for the kids that come into Head Start, they're selected to be the kids that are the absolute-
Right.
Most at need. Exactly, but we're still reaching huge levels.
But I, I would be very surprised if the numbers, I mean, our numbers at times look really, really high. And right now, the twenty-nine students we have, currently, we have three students that are right now being, being tested and considered, so our numbers could actually go up a little higher. But our, our schools, that's what, that's the reality that we're seeing across the board with our classrooms. I mean, I don't think Oak Grove is, is that unique. I think percentage-wise, it just, it's, it can be astounding for one, one or two particular classes, because, you know, you have twenty students, if you have four students, that's twenty percent of the class.
Jerry, could you return to one of your first slides on the vision?
Oh my gosh. Yeah.
What is a thoughtful person?
I, I think we, we look at, you know, being thoughtful as being a creative, being a creative thinker. You know, thinking through a, a project, you know, having, having small group discussion on, here's, here's a problem. Let's have opportunities for everybody to think about what might be a solution for that. And it's also about, you know, how are we thoughtful about others during-
Others, the heat.
It also comes along, it also goes along with, I mean, you can't necessarily measure that, because I bet that's where you're going to go, you know, how do you measure, you know, being thoughtful?
What, where were you going with this question?
What's that?
Considerate of others.
Why were you asking this question, Spoon?
Well, I just wondered, it's a goal. I mean, if there's no way to really measure it, or explain it, then there's no point in having it there. Then you might as well say, just leave it out and say, be a creative and productive member of one's community.
Well, one, one might argue that what is creative, how do you measure that? My measurement of creativity might be totally different than somebody else's, as well as productive. How do you measure what is being a productive member? So, I mean, I think we could argue, or discuss, not necessarily argue, I apologize, but I mean, have a conversation about, you know, all of those ideas of, of words or phrases we put into a vision. That what do we want from our children as they're, they're leaving Oak Grove? And that's really what I mean in terms of, we have a vision, even though the word is a goal, is, it's, you know, our, our vision is that we hope that when children leave Oak Grove, that there is some, that they have been thoughtful, they have shown respect, they're thinking about others, not just themselves.
Well, you have, you're a product of your environment.
Yeah.
And you control, we do our best to control our environments to produce successful citizens to the community.
Thoughtful, this is what I think about thoughtful, is being considerate of others, thinking about others.
Right.
And that's obviously really difficult to work with, but it's not something that impossible to help kids get to, point out, kids get to, it's part more, part of the social curriculum. But to be considerate of others, to work with others-
But social curriculum is a huge part of what we do.
Do you actually ask kids if they have a sense of belonging to the community?
That's part of student climate surveys.
Actually, those come out, I don't think you've seen those probably yet, right? When do those come again?
Not till winter.
We usually do them, yeah, in the winter, February.
So they're about to come, Spoon, and it's a long list you'll see on this sort of type of question that they're asked to all the students and-
They feel safe, if they feel like they belong.
If they can talk to them.
They have friends, yeah. Okay. I wasn't going to talk this.
This takes a long time, but it's really worth it. You know, for us, I think especially.
So I know we've talked a lot about Sback scores and, you know, you know, how folks feel about them, but I, you know, with, even looking at our population, the work that my staff is doing to to educate and to provide a learning environment, you know, kids are doing really well, and our, our scores show that. So, I cannot show you Sback scores for Oak Grove, because they are very significant, and we're very proud of them.
We want to see them.
What's that?
We want to see them.
That's why she said I can't not-
Yeah, so, there you go.
See them.
So, this was our, this was last year, last spring, so this is our third grade cohort. Oak Grove is in red, and the rest of the SU is in blue. ELA on the left, the map. You have two years, this is the same cohort of, Oak Grove again is the TAN, so they are our current fifth graders. We hope that this year, of course, you're going to see some, you know, continued growth of from third grade math to fourth grade math, math, they made a significant jump. These are, again, students that are proficient or above proficiency, so that you can see what percentage of those students are proficient.
What explains why Oak Grove is so much higher than the others?
Well, we're not comparing to the rest of Viner World Town, we're just going to the-
The whole SU.
The whole SU.
And the blue for this group, I was able to get, you have two years of the state, you also show the state average, so it's a whole SU, it's not just the, the two Brent towns.
And this is, the third grade stats you're showing is actually the twenty-sixteen third grade? So it's, it's the same kids?
Yes, yeah. So it's the same cohort, so you have, this is when they were in third grade, this is in the fourth grade. So that, and so if you just even focus on- grade, this is in the fourth grade. So that, and so if you just even focus on where our kids are at, and just look at our scores, you can, so this is the growth line that you're hoping for, is that there's still pretty significant, especially in their math, pretty significant gain.
Well, what offhand, how does that compare, Matt, to your school?
I think we need to do that comparison another time when we can have all of that put together. I think that's a great question, Spoon, but we don't have that data right here.
So you could just name a figure, I mean, just as, as an higher or lower.
And I didn't, and I didn't bring, I pulled this, these slides up from slides that Greg Montgomery put together for me and for my, to share it with my staff last year. So I didn't, it was just easier for me, being not a real big techie person, to do that, to, I didn't, I didn't pull this up to have a conversation about, like, really how much better Oak Grove is, other than to show that this is, again, this is the growth path. When you have an upward trajectory where Oak Grove students continue to show progress is what I'd really like to continue to focus on, is that here are third grade and we're still making, we're still making progress. This is the same, again, the same cohort for three years of SBAQs.
And Andy made the point that a lot of the kids aren't the same cohort, means the same cohort, but they aren't the same kids. Do you, have you paid attention here in Oak Grove, how many of these kids are in and out?
We don't, well, again, because of our size, we don't have that many students that are in or out the way that Andy might have. And so our retention is, is pretty strong. I mean, it may be a handful of kids that are different, but not, not to let.
About a third of the population.
Right. I think this, one real strength of the school, this is truly a neighborhood school.
Is what?
It's a neighborhood school. Academy has no neighborhood in, in Green Street, really. There's no longer a neighborhood school, would you, I mean, would you agree?
Yeah, we're very transient.
Yeah.
So that neighborhood school makes a big difference, doesn't it?
Well, certainly in terms of what we're talking about, which, which right now is that transitivity. You know, Oak Grove is in a very stable part of town. It's a, it's a commu- it's a real community here, it's a real neighborhood, where our schools don't function that way in terms of our, our demographics, our community. Very different. The, the largest housing development in Brownborough is the, the Triller Park, West Manhattan.
Is what?
The Triller Park. Mount Triller Park, and then there's West, West Gate and so forth. So those areas tend to have a lot more turnover in terms of occupancy, as opposed to single family housing or in this community.
I think the other thing, and I, I'm speaking only from Oak Grove, I don't, I'm not speaking with the other two schools, but the retention for staff this year, for our, for our teachers, was 100%. I didn't hire any new teachers, academic support, special ed, classroom teachers, from last year to this year. And the year before, I think, you know, it's when Kelly left to go to Academy, she was the last, she was.
Spoiled the perfect.
And the, and the, and Galen Kemp, who replaced her, had been in this building for six years. And so I think.
In that same classroom as the para, so she knew that her feeling.
That says something too. So when you have a school that has been working, the adults who have been working on the same curriculum, you're not having to retrain adults and teachers on new curriculum. So they've been working on the curriculum, they, they get each other, they, they under, you know, they've been collabor- collaborating with each other around interventions, looking at data, designing curriculum, being in each other's classrooms. You know, there's a level of trust that is also, I think, gonna reflect what you're gonna see in terms of your scores. You're not kind of starting over with people that are kind of coming, that you may have with some, some turnover. So we're very fortunate there, that the people, as well as the students, what Andy was saying, you're, you know, it's a small school, it's a small, excuse me, it's a small community. And, you know, we're, you know, we, we're fortunate, again, that we have the supports in place with our academic support and our special educators that are working very hard to have, to show this progress. And I think this was just our sixth graders. Yeah. So, anyway, that, you know, that's it. And so, okay. Like I said, I, I really hope that sometime soon this spring, we could invite our student leadership council, if nothing else, on Oak Grove. They're very anxious to talk about some of the rewards that they've, that they've received and the work that they're, that they're also doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. So at this point, folks, we are at 20 to eight. And so I have an email started already for our next agenda, and I've already written down the student leaders that we wanna look at that and the SBAQ scores comparison that we still haven't really looked at. We've kind of looked at the SBAQ, kind of, but not really.
We have Shelley Wilson coming.
So.
That's the behavior.
Yeah. That's over 30 minutes.
And did we want to?
So wait a minute, what I was saying was just that we need to look at our work plan, not necessarily have it on next agenda.
Also, Jill, you mentioned about the annual report.
The annual report we're gonna have to do, but I was gonna come back to this agenda and look for what else. But I think at our next meeting, we need to take our work plan and actually decide, because we, this is like the third or fourth meeting that we are hours upon hours. And the information is really great, but it's long. I think we're asking administrators to be out really.
We're cramming too many things onto the agenda.
Yes, yes. So I think we need to look at that for tonight's agenda. So keep your ideas on agendas, we'll look at them. Tonight's agenda, that, is there anything from the administrators that was actionable that you needed us to take action on?
I have one thing, and Andy has one.
Go, Andy.
I'm gonna pass around the monthly report from Academy, however, you, I'm not gonna talk about it, except that there is a letter that I want you to see that's on the third page of this. So, that letter's going home to parents tomorrow.
Are there other reports you guys should turn around and announce?
So, what's in the letter? And I'm not asking you to read it now, I just want you to have a copy of that. And as I mentioned, we will, this, what you're receiving is a copy of the letter that will inform you, but also it's a letter that's going home to parents tomorrow in the mail. So we, we've had the, the distinction of being the first wave of schools in Vermont that the state is testing for radon and for water, for lead in the water. So the state's goal is to test all schools in Vermont over the next, I don't know how many years, but we were, we were asked to be in that first wave and.
And actually, when I was asked as chair, I thought I was saying yes for all three schools. I didn't understand.
Yes, just us this time around. So everyone will be tested, however. So they're actually setting up the protocols and they're using a number of schools of the state to, to help set up the protocols and procedures to, to not only test, but then to, to mitigate.
Are you sure on that, actually? Because I emailed the woman when she gave me the results just for Academy, and she said, no, there's no plans for the rest of the school.
Well, that was my understanding per, so I thought I could be.
Or maybe I'm confused.
Was that your understanding too?
Yeah.
Yeah?
This was the pilot, but it was.
Pilot, yeah.
Because I said, well, what about our other two schools? Shouldn't they be tested too? And she said, well, we have no plans for that.
Well, we, Oak Grove was tested for lead. We were required to get our license for pre-K. So our.
But this is lead and radon, right?
Right. Well, they wanted lead because of pre-K, correct?
Yes, that's all.
So there's no requirement, unless you're on a well, if you're on city water, town water, there's no requirement right now to test the lead or radon. So, anyway, this was, we were, we were selected to, to do it. So, and what, I want to report to you is the results. So, and you guys, to radon, the measurement that's, that is considered national standards by the EPA, that is safe, is 4.0. And that represents picocuries per liter. I don't know exactly what a picocure is, but in terms of measurement, that's 4.0. So if you were to buy a house today in, in a community, often you would have a radon, someone come in and measure the level of radon that's in your home. And if it's a, if it's less than four, you'd be happy. If it's more than four, one might ask that, that seller mitigates it. So it's the same for schools. So, we, we have over 50,000 square feet, so it's a little more complicated than testing, you know, a 2,000 square foot home. But nonetheless, 49 different spaces were tested recently at Academy School for the level of radon. And this was a two or three day test. And that has come, that has come back. Of all those, so EPA is 4.0. The state is saying we, that we'd like all spaces to be 2.0 or less, which isn't necessarily realistic, but in my viewpoint. But 4.0 is the target that we want to avoid. Long story short here, there are seven spaces, classrooms or office spaces at Academy that came back at above that 4.0 threshold. So seven spaces that we need to mitigate, mitigate. The process from the Department of Health that they've outlined is that the testing that was done was a charcoal canister. It depends, it, it can be reasonably accurate, I've read. Left for several days in, in a particular space, then it goes to lab and is a test, and somehow they can determine the radon level at that time. The next step is a more sophisticated test where they actually come in with an electronic device that can, that over, several day period measures are made on it in these spaces. To do a building of our size is projected to take about three months to do, because the testing, they do, they do a few sites, a few spaces at a time and just continue throughout the building. So, in the meantime, we're, we're figuring out other, if there are ways that we can, we can mitigate these spaces. And all the classrooms and, and most of the spaces have an HVAC system similar to the one behind, behind you on that wall. And those operate by, by piping hot water into them and generating radiant heat. And there's a fan. They also bring cold fresh air in, they mix the fresh air from outside into the building so that you get this mix in the classroom. In the winter, you get less fresh air coming in than you would, let's say in April, when the temperature's much higher. And that is, if you brought in the air tonight, which is probably six degrees outside, it would make the room even colder than it apparently is. So, so we're looking at ways, and now this is all electronically controlled at our, you know, in our systems these days. So we're looking at ways without freezing pipes to bring in more air in those spaces. So we have, we have two, two spaces that are small office spaces slash classrooms that don't have an HVAC system like that in there. So we really don't have an opportunity to, to exchange the air as we might in a classroom. So with those two, those two spaces, we are not waiting for the testing, which will take three, additional testing. We wanna move forward and correct, correct those as soon as possible. Okay? And as, and I've been doing some research on that, and although I have no quotes on this, but based on what I've been able to learn, that, that maybe in the neighborhood, about $5,000 to, to do that. So I'm hoping that the work I've done thus far is accurate in terms of the dollar amount. But these are, these are relatively small spaces. The, so, and that would be done as soon as, soon as possible. The other parts of the building would be, would be, you know, we'd be waiting until we got further testing and we'd learn more about how you, you, you know, how one brings down the radon levels in the building. The other issue is, it's also in the letter, is lead in the water. So, and there, that's, while we, we did have reports of lead in the water, and they explained that 49 taps were tested. And the EPA, the EPA and the state of Vermont have different viewpoints on, on what's, what should be in, you know, what should, what's allowable, or what's recommended, I should say. The EPA says that if there's, they measure lead in the water by the, let's see, parts per billion. So they say if there's, if there's 15, 15 particles per billion, 15 particles of lead per billion, that that's, that's high. So you wanna be under 15 parts per billion. We had a, we had a few taps that were, that exceeded that, and over the break, we immediately removed those taps. We, many students, most students in our school drink a lot of water. We encourage that. It's, it's a healthy and good thing. Many of our students have water bottles and they fill them at fountains. Some, many of the classrooms had the fountains at the sink, which you may remember your elementary school days, we had a little fountain at your sink. We've, we've taken all those out because, because those, several of those were over at 15 parts per billion. So we, we've taken those out. But, so now all the water that students use to fill their water bottles are consumed will be, will be from the hallway water fountains. Okay? And all those were tested and they're perfectly fine. With the exception of the one tap that I mentioned, which was not in the classroom, I'm sorry, which was not being used in the fountain, all the, all the lead levels were, were low enough where if you ran the water for a few seconds, that there was no lead in the water. And that's called the flush, because what happens is the lead that's in the water is in the fixtures, and which are, which are old.
It's the solder.
It's the solder in the fixtures and up until, I don't know, at one time when our school was built and all of our schools in Brownborough were built, solder, which put together the pipes, held together the pipes, contained 50% or more lead. And now, and over a period of time, the government began to realize that lead was harmful, so they, they passed legislation to decrease the amount of so, of lead that could be in solder. And today, you can have, you cannot have lead at all in solder. So, but in the 50s, when Academy was built, most of that solder probably contained at least 50% lead. So, so that's the issue. But as soon as you run the water for about, for, up to 30 seconds, you know, the, the, the lead in the water is gone. But to be, to be 100% safe, we are not allowing anyone to take water out of, consumption out of any faucet except the water bottles. In the kitchen, they are running the water for. Uh, in the kitchen, um, they are running the water for, for about 30 seconds to stop the day before they drain any water out of it, which would also alleviate the problem. Is that good? We'll also be working with Department of Health to, you know, and with, um, continuing to monitor the water and make sure it's totally safe. But, um, it also, a high, a significant number of homes in our community have lead in the water. Um, you know, again, if they have copper pipes and the house was built, you know, 130 or 40 years ago, um, there is, there's traces of lead in their water. And there, they can do the same thing, um, run the, run their water, uh, before using it for consumption or cooking.
So there's no action that we actually need to take, which you seem to know, right?
Just wanted to inform you of, of that.
Because it's not over a threshold that we need to vote on anyway?
No, and, and, and I'm assuming that when the, once the lead goes home, that, that there'll be a level of concern raised by parents, you know, community. You may get inquiries, phone calls.
Particularly Ron.
Yeah. I'll, I'll ask some questions for you, but I'm not gonna take up the meeting's time at that.
Okay. Mark, you have something for us?
Can you present it? So I have a letter, um, here. Uh, Dear Lyle, since joining the staff at Putney Central School in 1975, I've had the honor and privilege of serving the needs of the children of WSCSU. After Putney, I taught at Esteville, Canal Street, Walnut Street, Oak Grove, and Green Street Schools, and have been at Green Street for the past 25 years. Throughout my career, I have attended countless conferences, workshops, trainings, thank you, and in the process have met many teachers from other districts. This gave me the opportunity to compare notes on our schools. I always came away from those comparisons with admiration and gratitude for WSCSU's commitment to innovation and encouragement of new ideas, methods, and approaches, because after all, education is and should always be evolving into the use of better and more diverse methods to educate our precious clientele. I am grateful that I got to spend my career in the company of children, and now it is time for me to retire, which I plan to do in June 2018. Thank you so very much, Donna Remy Powers. So I would ask that you accept or regret her.
Need a motion for that?
David?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What exactly did she teach?
She was academic support at Green Street. 20 plus years.
And so I have the question then always of whether we would want that position refilled? Is that funded? And how is that one funded?
I, I think she is a Title I.
Frank was gonna look into that.
Frank was gonna look into that, but the majority of hers is Title I, I believe. It's an 80% position.
80% time. I think it'd be good to know that, if you can bring that back at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so...
I think the Title I positions are funded at different...
Right, that's what I mean. So if we knew. Um, so just looking at that old agenda, um, were there anything, any things we needed to know from policy council, energy committee, finance, diversity? The Act 46, we're still getting alternative governance subcommittee agendas and such?
Yeah. The, um, website should, today, I sent to Barb today the, uh, the letter to the secretary and the actual proposal that went up, and we meet again tomorrow night to start, uh, listing data that we'll need, and, um, we've engaged an attorney to look into the questions. I haven't heard back from them yet, so, ongoing.
Who's paying for the AGS?
I don't know. I think Demmerson. We're not...
I don't...
Demmerson or Vernon, maybe? Did Demmerson and Vernon actually send that as their...
They sent letters. Yeah.
But were their letters saying that they wanted the alternative?
They submitted the AGS, yeah.
So did they, they would want to pay for the legal?
I have no idea. It might be promono. I don't know.
Okay. Noteworthy accomplishments, we're kind of skipping unless anyone's jumping up and down to tell us anything. Budget, we've done, we've done Oak Grove pre-K. The annual report, opinions on what to include, please email them to me directly. How's that? And I'll try to write something, and then we'll have it, I'll try to go to you before the meeting, so you can look at it, and then we'll discuss it the next meeting. Since it is a report from all of us, I think it's nice if you all look at it. Next agenda items, I've already picked out on the list that I've sent to Barb. Do you have anything else?
I have a couple of, I think, there, to be fairly quick. It's basically following up on the, I looked at, I was looking at a work plan, and we had scheduled to follow up on gender, actually, I was looking at the minutes, to follow up on the gender bias presentation on April 4th, but that's the same time that continuous improvement plans, I think, action plans, maybe, something else.
Yeah, I want to look at that whole thing at our next meeting.
Yeah, so, um, but we didn't put anything in, in the budget to pay for any, for the training for that or for, um, uh, racial diversity training, the other things that we talked about that, you know, we're looking into. So, um, I'm not sure that we need to spend a lot of time talking about it, but it seems like the action planning process, I'm not sure how, you know, where things are going, the action planning process, and the action plan should include, and probably the professional development plan as well. Um, I don't know how much we need to, input we need to have on that, but I just wanted to make sure that that doesn't wind up at the end of the year, oops, we didn't follow up on it.
So we have, uh, Paul Smith, Julian Egan, myself are working on the first draft of the action plan SU, which will then, um, go out to administrators to be targeting, uh, so administrators can put in targeted...
Specific things for us.
Right, yep.
Great.
But all, all based under the SU umbrella.
Great, so we don't have to put it on the agenda.
Not right now, anyway. Eventually, we'll want to come to you with it and present it.
Thank you.
Did you have something else? David? Did you have something else?
Those are the two.
Oh, okay. The two were together.
I probably do, but I'm not gonna...
Anyone else?
I'll...
For the good of the order.
I just wanted to ask on the next agenda that you mentioned, that Shelley is coming to talk about, um, behavioral support. And I think that was something that we had decided to do after I had mentioned that there was some community confusion about what was going on with that. So, um, should I publicize that meeting? Is that something like for parents to come and attend, or do we...
Sure.
Yes? I mean, obviously, anyone's welcome to attend any meeting, but it's gonna be the kind of thing that people would get something out of as a parent.
For sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
Shelley will give a little bit of an overview. Just like academics, we look at behavior in tiers. And so tier one is what's happening in the regular classroom, and, um, a few schools are PBIS, but Shelley will talk a little bit about classroom, um, management and the professional development we've done with teachers around the basic classroom management, and then what happens if that's not working, and then what happens if that's not working, so. And she can talk a little bit about our STEP programs in each school. Um, she's asked, um, if we might like to have a parent or two that have had students that have gone through the process with STEP come and talk a little bit about the difference that it made for their children. So she's going to see, I had talked with Jill, and Jill said, sure.
I said, yes, I thought that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Anytime. Yeah.
And we have a motion adjourned.
Ooh.
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.